The Fiscal Court, the Fiscal Court has returned to open session. Turn on your mics and renew your motions to go into open session.
Motion.
There's a motion by Squire Gentry.
Second.
And a second.
Your part.
A Squire Taylor to return to open session. The court went into executive session pursuant to the statute in closed session to discuss potential litigation. The court has returned with a report that they would like to request that the Planning and Zoning Director investigate and report on the business operations of the Rail Explorers and the origination thereon in consultation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is no report on potential litigation regarding the MAP Amendment. We'll discuss that further, Mr. Director, because I can tell you need some clarification, and we'll do that during your report, but that is the report of the closed session of the Woodford County Fiscal Court. There being no other matters to come before the Committee of the Hole, the Committee of the Hole is now adjourned. I will call this meeting, the regular meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court, to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor.
Here.
Squire Gentry.
Here.
Squire Warner.
Here.
Squire Blackbird.
Here.
Squire Gill.
Here.
Squire Brown.
I would like to invite Pastor Joe Lauderdale of Living Grace Church to offer our invocation. You can turn on the mic, Pastor, and welcome.
Father, we are thankful for time together. We are thankful for men and women in this community who long to serve and to provide support to the members of this community. Lord, you are gracious and you are good, and I pray that all those involved in the meeting tonight reflect those same qualities and characteristics. Lord, bring us together to be a better community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. If you are able, please rise.
I am honored to be the steward of the United States of America and to be devoted to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I would just like to make a note that we have never started a Fiscal Court meeting that late, but we were in an executive session to discuss potential litigation that went far beyond the bounds of our time. We appreciate everyone's patience and time, appreciate the court's discussion therein. But I would like to actually talk about something a little bit different. I have a solemn moment to begin tonight's meeting. We lost a great Woodford Countyan on July 16th. Mr. Larry Richards passed away. Larry Richards Sr. went home to be with the Lord after a long and courageous fight. He was born in Versailles in Woodford County on August 31st, 1942, to the late William Richards and Lula Kate Thomas Richards. He is preceded in death by his sister Corliss Lee Howard. He was a faithful member of Imani Baptist Church, a member of the choir, the praise team, part of the men's fellowship, and he was on the executive board, serving his church and his God with dedication for many decades. He was the past Chair of the Versailles Midway Human Rights Commission, a member of the Woodford County NAACP, and Larry was a businessman. He retired from IBM and Lexmark. He worked at Jack Cane Ford and worked at AT&amp;T before that. He loved preparing food for his church. He loved UFL sports, riding his motorcycle, and playing softball, and he volunteered for the food drive at Imani Baptist Church and drove the bus for its after-school program. He's survived by his children and his loving wife, who many of us know and think so highly of, Brenda Richards. Larry was a great man. He was a great Midwejan. He was a great Woodford Countyan from a great family, and we mourn his loss. We join his family, and we send them our condolences and prayers. And if I could begin our meeting late tonight, we begin it in honor and with a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Larry Richards. Amen. Thank you. Thank you for that, members of the court. We have the, a couple of business items, but the first thing that we're going to do is move into committee reports. Our Committee of the Hole met prior to this meeting. We scheduled a Rail Explorer presentation, but the representative of the Rail Explorer was, had a slight delay, so we've extended the opportunity for that presentation to occur now. So if you could, please come to the podium, turn on the mic, and introduce yourself for the court. As I mentioned prior to this in the Committee of the Hole where we did have public comment regarding the Rail Explorers, this is an opportunity for them to present to the court. Any discussions between individuals and the Rail Explorers should happen outside of the courtroom, but the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Alex Catchpool. I'm co-founder of Rail Explorers with my wife and business partner, Mary Joy Lou. I do extend my apologies. I've actually been trying to get here since 4:00 a.m. this morning, but American Airlines didn't want me to do that, apparently. And then the thunderstorm in Charlotte, North Carolina delayed me another 90 minutes, which meant I missed the earlier meeting. So apologies for that, but I'm glad to be here and excited to update you on the efforts that we are making and that we will continue to make to address some of the concerns that have been raised in the community and by our neighbors along the railroad track. I'd like to start with sound mitigation, which is perhaps the biggest and biggest concern for people, and it draws the most attention. So when we became aware of complaints about the loudness of the rail bikes, the steel-on-steel clatter of them going by, we began testing, immediately began testing a new, it's a rubberized wheel. It's a lighter weight aluminum wheel instead of a solid steel wheel, and it has a, like a quarter inch of heavy-duty black urethane on the rim. And what that does is eliminates the steel-on-steel noise. There is still the noise of the bike going over the joints in the rail, but it is significantly quieter than the steel wheels. We had, we were able to get our hands on 40 of those wheels. We have rolled them out onto all of the four-seater rail bikes, so 10 rail bikes have those on all four, all four wheels have been replaced. We've ordered more, and they are under manufacture right now. We're expecting them to be delivered within the next, I'm not sure, month to six weeks, I hope. They're custom-made for us. There's no store that you can go to to purchase these things. But I'm very confident that those changes to the way that the bikes connect to the rail will have a significant and marked improvement for residents who are hearing the bikes go The, just, not that it's important, but the investment in those wheels is around about $40,000. So we've taken that step already. The other concern is visual, visual privacy concerns of being able to view or our riders being able to view, look into and see private backyards, people enjoying their homes. We can and will look at those areas, and if it's appropriate and wanted by the resident and, you know, fulfills the various zoning and permitting. and, you know, fulfills the various zoning and permitting, we'll build privacy fences or we'll plant hedges or, you know, whatever we can do to screen those viewpoints from our riders, we're happy to accommodate. The, you know, the further step on that is instruction to riders, you know, the, we do, for those of you who are not aware, we do a safety presentation at the beginning of every tour where we run through the rules, the how to operate the rail bike, and what behavior is expected. We stress that, and will stress more, more forcefully going forward, that this, you know, these are neighborhoods, these are private residences, and they deserve our riders' respect. We have ordered signage which reads, I think it's residential zone, please be respectful. Those signs will be installed along the track at places where residences are close to the In addition, there's been some discussion of the safety of road and farm crossings. The, you know, just to, again, to address that, we've ordered a number of, they're actually road signage, traffic signage, specially-built microwave motion-sensitive signs with flashing LED lights, which will be triggered by the approach of rail bikes and will warn vehicles on the farm crossings that there are rail bikes approaching. Also, those crossings are already signed. There are caution slowdown signs to the riders. There are also increased rail traffic signs to the vehicles. Those have been there since we opened. The flashing signs, we actually just received those today. The shipment arrived today. We're planning to install those along the track in consultation with the railroad over the next, you know, seven days. So stand by for updates on those. And yes, we reiterate to the riders about being aware of those crossings and being careful as they approach them and to be ready to slow down and give way to traffic if, you know, if the traffic is not going to stop for them. On July 10, we had a meeting at the railroad where we invited residents to come and see what the sound of the new wheels was like. You know, we entered into that with, you know, hoping to find common ground, and we would, you know, we'll continue to update the community with responses to those concerns. The issue of loud talking on the bikes, the way, I believe that that will be solved by not only verbal instruction about being respectful to the neighbors, but also the reduced sound of the wheels means that, because it's also loud when you're on the bikes. The steel wheels make a lot of noise when you're sitting on the bikes. So, you know, it's sometimes difficult to carry on a conversation because you've got to talk loudly to get over the noise of the bike, and that sound carries. So people are hearing, you know, loud voices. I believe that the overall quieter ride will address some of that concern as well. We've also adjusted our schedule. There was some concern about evening rides. We've now restricted those rides to only Friday and Saturday. We've canceled all of our weekday 9:00 p.m. departures. But I'd also like to use this opportunity just to address some of the other concerns that have come up here on social media and basically other talk of the town. We're very careful about getting all of the bikes back to the station before 11:00 p.m. There are GPS units on the first and the last bike which record to the second exactly where that bike is at any time. I've gone back through the records, and certainly for the late tours, I haven't found a single tour that was back into the sta, actually at the station after 10:55. So the nearest house is maybe 10 minutes further down the track, so there isn't, as far as I can tell from the evidence of the GPS units, there's no instances of us being out beyond 11:00 p.m. There was a comment about people shining flashlights into backyards and into bedrooms. We don't hand out flashlights. There are lights, headlights on the rail bikes for safety, but they point directly at the track. We also hand out lanterns to the customers, but these are just a glowing, they're not really even a light source. They're just more to light up the bike itself. If people are shining lights into backyards, they may be using their phones or they might be bringing their own lighting devices, but it's not something that we are encouraging or facilitating. The fact that lights are visible from residences is just indicative of the fact that it's dark and the lights are visible. They're not being shone necessarily into people's houses. The issue of trespass, I don't believe that Rail Explorers customers are to blame for trespass or getting off the bikes. There's strict instructions to stay on the bikes at all times. If items are dropped, they're instructed to allow the tour guides at the rear of the bike to, at the rear of the tour, to sweep in and pick up those items and return them. Getting off the bike doesn't just infringe on trespass, it's also a serious safety concern. The bikes, the four-seaters are 700, 800 pounds of steel. With four people on them, you're looking at a lot of weight and a lot of momentum. And if you're standing between the rails looking for a dropped item, there's a real danger of collision. So we instruct people very clearly to not get off the bikes and not wander around. It would also cause significant disruption to the tour itself because, you know, there would be a logjam of bikes behind. So I would suggest that if there have been incidences of trespass, even though it's private property, the railroad is easily accessible from the roadway, from driveways. There are, we've seen people walking the tracks during our tours, people who are not supposed to be there. So again, I would, I would, for the record, like to put out there that I do not believe that Rail Explorers is responsible for trespass, although we will continue to remind our riders and go through the rules at the beginning of the ride and at the turnaround area. What else? There was a comment about flaggers not paying attention, flaggers who are supposed to be making sure that the steel road crossing is clear. Now, obviously, I'm not there 24/7 watching every tour go by, but we do very strict safety training on our guides. The use of cell phones and earbuds is strictly forbidden for guides. They are supposed, they're there for one reason, and that is to make sure that the rail bikes can safely cross those road crossings. So if the report was true that there was a staff member with earbuds in listening to music and not paying attention, that is contrary to the rules of the operation, and those rules have been reinforced with the staff. That's all I have to say on the comments that I'm aware of, and I hope that this is an opportunity for the court to understand that we do take our responsibility in the community seriously, that we're working very hard to be a good neighbor, and will continue to do so. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Would you take questions from the Fiscal Court, or would you like to do that, or would you like them to be submitted to you in another fashion?
As time allows. At your service.
All right. I'll open up the floor for any member of the Fiscal Court to have a question. I would remind everyone that we are way over time at 6:08, so I would request that we be brief and respectful.
Judge, may I?
Mr. County Attorney, sir, you're recognized.
Sir, thank you for coming. Alcohol, alcoholic beverages are prohibited at the Woodford County Park. As I understand it, many of those who ride your rail cars park in the Woodford County Park parking lot, which is county property. How do you address alcohol use and consumption? Again, the property that the rail's on and immediately abutting it is Bluegrass Railroad Museum property, but they can't access it without coming on Beasley Road, the county road, and then parking in the county lot on the county park. So what, what are the, is there a prohibition, I would hope, against alcoholic beverages?
We don't supply or sell alcohol to our riders. We do stipulate that the person in the, what we call the stop-go seat that controls the motor and the brakes is, does not consume alcohol, but we don't prohibit the other riders from doing that.
Well, I'll say this respectfully. I think the county can prohibit them bringing it on county property, which is bringing it into the parking lot.
Okay, that's noted. I wasn't aware that the county property was...
If it's your property, you know where you have these elsewhere where maybe there's no county property that's involved or municipal property or anything like that, you can do what you wish, but...
Right.
If they're bringing it on county property and walking across the public lot, they're unlawfully possessing it on county property. Doesn't matter that they're not consuming it on the county property.
That is understood. I will, I'll talk to the team about that.
So I might ask that you look into, on behalf of the Fiscal Court, I'm asking, that you look into, at least here, making it a prerequisite that alcoholic beverages are not permitted by anyone on county park property.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the Fiscal Court? Squire Gill, you're recognized.
Thank you. Somebody mentioned earlier, one of the neighbors said that, you know, when they're going down those cars, I guess things might fall out of their pockets, and they found pocket knives on their eight-year-old, found pocket knives on their property that might have fallen out of pockets. Could you give some kind of a recommendation that they leave those in their car or whatever?
We do advise all of our riders to place any belongings into the baskets. There is a basket between the seats. Because things do fall out of pockets, we've retrieved phones and car keys and all sorts of stuff. I'm not sure how it got onto a neighbor's property unless it was thrown from the rail bike, because if it's falling out of the rail bike, the right-of-way is, I think, 30 feet either side of the center line. So it would be a difficult bounce to get it onto somebody's property from there, but we don't prohibit people bringing, we don't frisk people, we don't do anything of that I mean, we can ask people to leave, to place their items in the basket so that they're safe and retrieved afterwards.
Thank you, Squire Gill. Squire Brown, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'd like to know, how'd you find your way here to come and know that Versailles was here and what you're doing?
We have a team at HQ that is constantly looking at potential partnership opportunities. We became aware of the Bluegrass Scenic Railroad, I think, two years ago, and we reached out to John Penfield, the president, just with a cold call, are you interested in partnering, bringing new people in, putting more traffic on the railroad, being a bigger part of the activity? And he thought it was a great idea, and so we started working out that contract. And it took about a year going back and forth with their lawyers and our lawyers, and then we opened, I believe it was July 27 of last year.
Okay. Now, are y'all a profit or nonprofit?
We're a full-profit company.
Okay. May I ask what you charge and how's that work?
It's charged per rail bike. So we have two types. There's a four-seater called a quad and a two-seater called a tandem. I think here, the price is around about $180, $185 for a quad, so $42 and change per person. The two-seater, I think, is $99, so $45 per person.
Okay. Now, what does railroad get for that museum?
They get a fee per rider. So I think to date, we've had some 9,000 riders, and the, it's staggered to increase over the years. And I believe it's, right now, it's $2 per rider. So from our operations this year, they've received $18,000 from us, and they will continue to receive those payments. And then that, next season, that payment will go up to, I'm not sure what's in the contract, I'd have to look that up, but, you know, $3, $3.50, those sort of things.
So how long a contract do you have with them? They take time with you?
I believe it's five years.
Five years.
I don't have a copy of the contract with me, but I believe it's five years. I can share that with the court if you're interested.
We would welcome that. Mr. Catchpool, thank you. Squire Downing?
Thank you again for being here, and this is more of a contractual question if you were able to answer, but just curious, as a leased operator of the line, do you all have any sort of maintenance agreement with the Bluegrass Railroad?
Our maintenance capacity is limited. We don't have the heavy equipment that's required to do the typical railroad maintenance that you see. But what we do is, we contribute financially. They did a major track rebuild down near Steel Road earlier this year, and we, I think, footed the bill for, I don't, I'm not sure the project, the amount, but some thousands of dollars to contribute to that. I mean, and then the other, the other thing that we do is, you know, grounds maintenance and trash collection, because we're, you know, more agile, easier to stop a rail bike and jump off and grab a soda can or whatever than it is on a train.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Squire Gentry, you're recognized, sir.
Yeah, you said that you all are implementing new times and a new schedule. When is that schedule going to start?
It started already. We've canceled all of the midweek 9:00 p.m. tours through the summer, which were scheduled and restricted those just to...
They clearly do. I mean, they get priority.
And with that, when is the last bike back, Monday through Thursday?
I believe it's, I believe there's a 7:00 p.m. lightning bug tour that goes out, and that's about two hours, so they'll come back about 8:50.
And that's Monday through Thursday?
I don't think that runs every day. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but if that tour is running, that's when they'll be coming through.
All right, because a lot of these residents have kids, and school's about to start up. They're very loud, and I know you're trying to mitigate that, but it might be better to cut it on back a little bit more. Just, I can't tell you what to do, but...
What I'd like to put to the court is, I firmly believe that these mitigations, particularly the wheels, are going to make a huge improvement, and if the lateness of the tours going past is, has been as disturbance as it obviously has been, I believe that the new wheels, I'm saying, give them a chance. If there's still a problem in a couple of months' time, we can address that. can address that.
Okay. School starts, I do believe, August the 8th, and you're talking about six weeks to get the wheels, six to eight weeks, is that correct?
They were ordered three weeks ago, so yeah, we're into, we're up to maybe five to six weeks now.
Okay, so in that time, can we cut it back a little bit, the time, just while school's starting?
I'll talk to the team about that.
Thank you.
Squire Barney, you had something, sir?
Yes, sir.
How many operations do you have across the country besides this one?
We have six other locations.
Okay. Any of these problems surface at any of those other places?
We have dealt with adjacent neighbors in one other location with, and we've taken steps to address those concerns with fencing and with similar sound and signage, and that has been quite successful.
With knowing that and having that already in your knowledge, my question is, I know you rode the line before you started the business, and you saw the folks, how they lived right close to the tracks. And I was just wondering why we couldn't mitigate some of those before you started, and maybe because you already had knowledge that your other operations had those problems.
The mitigations that we did at the operation that I'm thinking of, there's no train on that track, so we were actually able to modify the rail to reduce the noise of the bikes going through. That's not, that solution doesn't work here, because what we did there, if, as soon as the train came through, it would just strip it all to pieces. So the solution that we came up with to solve the noise in that location was not immediately appropriate for here, and that's why we, when we became aware of the issues, immediately jumped to get the rubberized wheels that we haven't used, you know, those are not in use in any of our other divisions. So this is a cold test of how they're going to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Squire Taylor, you're recognized.
And this may include, require the inclusion of the Bluegrass Railroad Museum, but I think maybe in your initial discussion, you mentioned the track gaps being portioned outside. Is there any plans for that to be addressed in the future as well?
Not by Rail Explorers. That is a track maintenance question that you would have to address to the railroad.
Thank you, Squire Taylor. Squire Carl?
You just asked my question.
All right. Other questions or comments? Squire Gill, you're recognized.
Thank you. Can you tell us roughly how many riders you have a month, say during peak season?
I can look it up real quick on my computer, but I don't want to give you a wrong estimate.
Thank you.
Judge?
Yes, Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Sir, in full transparency, I make sure so there's no misimpressions here. You mentioned the five-year agreement that you have. It's your understanding, there's an, you all have an option to renew for an additional five years, and then an additional five years after that. So it's currently a five-year agreement, but the Rail Explorers have the ability to extend it to 10 or 15 years. Is that your understanding?
I'm not entirely sure of the exact wording of the renewal clauses. As I said, the, my focus in the company is much more on the mechanics and on the mechanical operations. I'm not really part of the team that writes the contracts. That is usual in our other contracts. We have those kind of renewal options, but there are usually some conditions attached to them as well.
So if I'm mistaken in that regard, if you check into that, and if we're mistaken, if you could please alert the judge to that, okay?
Be happy to, yes.
All right, thank you.
Just to follow up on Squire Gill's, your 9,000 ridership, is that since you've been here? Is that this year?
That's this year.
Okay, so that was just to your question, Squire Gill.
Good county math work to work. I like it. Other questions or comments? Questions for Mr. Catchpool? Seeing, yeah, Squire Gentry, you're recognized.
I forgot, there was a question earlier brought up. It was a sanitation issue. Do you have any plans on putting a restroom at the turnaround at the end?
I would love to do that. There are logistical difficulties in doing that, because to be like a Portageon, even something like that, needs to be, it's rail access only, so it would need to be railed in and railed out. I don't have the facility to do that right now, but I am working on a number of ideas which may allow that to proceed. But right now, we don't have anything down there. We do have restrooms at the museum, and we advise all of our riders to use the restroom before they go, because there's nothing at the other end. And until we can find another solution, that's what we do.
Any final questions? I had one myself, so I'm going to let the fiscal court members ask it. Any final questions? My question would be, Mr. Catchpool, what is the best way for the neighbors, many of whom are in this room, to communicate with you and your company in the best way? Is it a point person? Is it a series of people? How would you all prefer to be a direct line of communication? Because that's what we think needs to happen as well.
I would welcome that. In fact, this whole process of mitigation could have been started a lot quicker if we had been approached in the first place. I found out about these by watching the live feed of these proceedings a month ago. There's a general info at email address on our website. There's a phone number on our website. There are always people at the station if you want to drop by. There's lots of ways to get in touch with us if you need to.
Thank you, Mr. Catchpool. I offer the opportunity for you to answer the final questions of the fiscal court before we allow Mr. Catchpool to leave. Anything else? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Catchpool, for joining us. You are more than welcome to be excused. We have to attend to our additional court business this evening, but we appreciate you coming here and addressing the court. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Since we are kind of in a moment of allowing folks to speak, I have Mr. Jeremy Dotson, President of the Woodford County Farm Bureau. And I'd like for Mr. Dotson to talk about the Woodford County Rodeo.
You just want to change the subject. Just messing with you, James. Brenna has got some tickets for everybody for the rodeo, which is on the 16th and 17th of August. Appreciate y'all working with us and letting us use the facility. If there's anything we can do, or that y'all think we need to do better, let us know. Just want to show appreciation by giving y'all some tickets. Other than that, I have nothing to say. She's telling Daryl right now that his envelope is empty.
Thank you, Brenna.
You got a press pass you can get in. You just tell them who you are. And we have some for Jordan, but she's, y'all locked her in the room, so...
Melody can get him there.
I'll tell you to get my tickets.
Thank you very much. The gates will probably open at 5:00, like we did last year. We opened a little bit earlier than the, it says 6:00. That was just because so many people was coming early, so we'll probably open at 5:00. 6:00 is the actual time. The rodeo won't start until about 7:30, because we start mutton busting at 7:00 and try to push that through, which is a fun thing. I don't know if any of y'all got to come out and watch that last year. That's kind of comical, watching those little kids ride the sheep, but we try to get that out of the way first. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jeremy and Brenna. And just to prove that I don't really want to change the subject, you see Rail Explorers, you give out these free passes to people, and it might go a long way. Not to the court, but maybe to the neighbors in this room. Thank you, Jeremy and Brenna. Thank you. additions, corrections, or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none. Are there any objections to approving the minutes as presented? There's no objection. We will approve the minutes as presented. Our committee reports, again, our committee as a whole met, and we took public comment regarding the Rail Explorers. We reconvened that committee as a whole for the purpose of hearing the presentation from Mr. Alex Catchpool of Rail Explorers, which just concluded. We were not able to get to our road committee, so let me address that. Squire Blackford, in particular, since we last met, we have Bo and Tracy in the room. They are the operations and road supervisor. They have worked with Adam Kirk, who did the study, the engineering study at the Kentucky Transportation Center at the University of Kentucky about Hunter Town Road and a potential sidewalk there. Tracy has set up a meeting, and I've asked her to inform magistrates of when that meeting is, if you'd like to attend that meeting. And we would specifically, yeah, yeah, come on up. And we would like to specifically request that Adam Kirk look at the corridor. I think that one of the things that has been clearly brought to the court's attention is the safety of the entire corridor. And frankly, it goes from Montgomery on Main all the way out to 60 on Hunter Town Road. But I'm talking about specifically in that area that Squire Blackford has identified with schools and churches and the subdivisions in that area. So we're hoping that they can provide us professional engineering information about how to make that corridor more safe, and to specifically also discuss any stop signs, stoplights, signals, crosswalks, and the issues that we've asked them to do. In talking to Amy Oats and Squire Blackford in particular, I am requesting a meeting with the superintendent of schools and the chief of police about that morning traffic safety on Hunter Town Road. In talking to them and other folks in that area, that is probably one of the most important and critical issues is traffic control, crosswalk control of that area during the peak hours of school, preschool, before school, and after school lets out at Hunter Town at the intersection of Hunter's Ridge Road and Woodburn Hall. We also have asked the state for engineering suggestions on also how to make that corridor more safe. That is what we're looking at in doing, which would have been discussed in the road committee meeting, but we didn't have time for that. Operations Supervisor, right? Do you have anything additional to add on that?
So I talked to Adam Kirk this morning, and he and I, and any of you all that want to come, are going to meet on August the 1st at 7:30 in the morning to, I know, to look at the traffic when school is not in session, see what's going on out there, figure out just a normal day without the school factor in there. We are also going to meet again on August the 12th, probably about the same time. We didn't want to meet on the first day of school, because that's just way too much. So, and he wanted to be able to get some sort of a report together for the next fiscal court meeting. So we're going to meet again on the 12th, which is a Monday, and he's going to look again, see what he sees, get a report together. And then he did say that he would come to the court meeting on the 13th to address the report, any questions. And he even suggested that we formulate a safety plan, whatever that may look like, and just look at all of it. So anybody that wants to come, that can come, 7:30. I think so. I think so, yes, Daryl.
7:30, August 1st.
And the 12th, I think. I'll have to verify that. He was out of town, so we were talking, he was two hours behind us, so he was trying to get coffee and, you know, get it together this morning when I talked to him. Squire Gill, you asked me a question yesterday, just the one, just the one. I had not remembered seeing two, but I wanted to verify, so I asked him this morning when I talked to him.
And would you all clarify what that is for the court and the public?
Yes. Squire Gill called me yesterday to ask how many of the counting devices were on Hunter Town Road, and it was just the one at St. Leo's. There was not another one, and I couldn't remember, because I don't always go home that way.
And so as an additional matter in relation to Hunter Town Road safety, we welcome input from the neighbors and the public specifically on this. We want to hear from folks who live in that area, whose kids go to Hunter Town, who go to St. Leo, go to church on that road. We would love to hear from you. I know I speak for the court and Squire Blackford in saying that.
Judge?
Squire Taylor?
I just wanted to add that I'm glad those meetings, I think, will be productive with the superintendent and the chief Murray. I will say that I did speak to Chief Murray as well about the concerns, and that's something that they're more than willing to look into on potentially from some other folks I discussed the issue with, said that many of the concerns are improved a lot when they have a presence for traffic control, but maybe that the times that they're not quite there yet, or the days they're not available to be there are some of the biggest problems. And so they're more than willing to look into ensuring that they're there maybe earlier and later, both at beginning of school and after as well. So I think it's a great conversation to start.
Thank you, Squire Taylor. Squire Blackford, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you for that, the meetings with Adam Kirk. Probably they come here to see for themselves visually. But like I said, my concern is really the safety, you know, the traffic's going to increase on Hunter Town Road. The traffic is still speeding now, and I think if we can slow the traffic down anyway over there with the two schools over there and all the subdivisions enter and exit off of Hunter Town Road, we want safety down the road, you know. And I know this is a traffic count, but I'm really talking about the safety.
And that's why we're meeting, so that we can develop a safety plan for the area, yes. And, I mean, I think we probably do need to have public input, and like I said, you all are welcome to come, be out there with us. And it will be August the 1st. Probably the Woodburn Hall area in the church parking lot would be a good place, because that's off the road. And then we can walk up the sidewalk to either direction. And I haven't confirmed that with him, but that was my thought when I was doing the, thinking about this today.
Another concern, I don't know if the caution lights really, I haven't seen the caution lights on much on Hunter Town Road.
Well, they're on.
You go low down, never see them working.
We have had a problem with those lights. An ongoing, continuous problem. We've had the technician out, I can't tell you how many times. We get them fixed, and then they don't work again. Short of putting new ones out there, I don't know what else to do with them. We've put in new light, the bulbs.
Madam Operations Supervisor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just go ahead and look at new lights, please.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely.
Squire Blackford, is the designation, designated area for the, this is a question I've had from a few folks, if you'll yield to a question, is the Woodburn Hall, Hunter's Ridge Road, is that where the stop sign needs to be, or even needs to be at Marcell's and Hunter Town?
Marcell's and Edmond, probably also, but definitely Woodburn and Hunter Ridge.
So you're wanting, are you, so you're wanting us to look at four-way stops all the way through?
No, just the two places.
Just the two, okay.
All the way through, just about those two places. I mean, there've been accidents at Edmund, at Meadow, and we have a lot of trouble. We only got two stop signs at Woodburn and coming out of Hunter Ridge, so two more signs, just slow traffic down for safer.
I mean, I'm open to whatever you all suggest that we need to do. I mean...
My whole thing is, I know there's a lot of traffic there, and I know a lot of people is very hesitant and very scared coming out of Hunter Town, you know, Hunter Town coming out of school area, and coming across Hunter Ridge, and also getting down, come across the school area, come down Hunter Town Road. There's a lot of traffic there, and it's going to increase. And I'm trying to look out further down the road, if there's a bypass coming through there, if there's more traffic on that side of town. And Hunter Town Road is usually locked, you know. So I don't know why we wouldn't go and get in front of it, slow the traffic down now, make it more safe. get in front of it, slow the traffic down now, make it more safe, and to play what's going to be in the future, so.
Again, we will do whatever the court directs us to do, whatever that may be, we're happy to do it.
Thank you, Squire Blackford. Anything additional?
No, I was going to say, it's more about safety and not about counting the traffic, you know, the numbers, traffic wise, it's about safety in that area and traffic going to increase.
Squire Varner, did you have something?
Yes, just one comment.
You recognize.
Thank you, sir. Just to go along with what Squire Blackford said, on at Edmund's Cross, you know, at some point that's going to have to be dealt with because you've got folks that are trying to jump the traffic to get onto Mersells, and so that's a safety issue too. And then when that road opens up, we're going to have more problems. So that's, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Squire Varner. Thank you, Madam Operations Supervisor. So again, we have some meetings, the road committee will convene, because we were unable to today due to time constraints, we will convene prior to our next meeting, I believe it's August 13th. Those are the total sum of the committee reports. Moving slowly through this agenda here. Reports of the treasurer, Madam Treasurer, your report, please.
Tonight's balance is $16,106,243.52. Also, we have an invoice from the city of Versailles that we received today for our payment for the pavilion.
That's right.
We have the MOA and received the invoice from them today, and I just needed a motion to go ahead and get that payment to them.
Is there a motion to approve the claim of the city of Versailles in the amount of $75,000 for the Versailles Market Pavilion, Woodford County, Kentucky, as agreed upon in the MOU with the city of Versailles unanimously passed year end? Motion by Squire Downey.
Second.
Second by Squire Taylor. I'd open the floor for any discussions or questions thereon. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the motion carries.
Also, I need a motion to accept the year-end report into the record for the year-ending June 30.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, did you get that, Madam Treasurer? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the fiscal court year-end report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, please vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the motion carries unanimously. Anything additional, Madam Treasurer?
I'll have a budget amendment on down.
Thank you, we'll get there. I'd like to call on Director of EMS, Mr. Freeman Bailey. Sorry, Director Chandler.
Thank you, Judge. Just want to bring y'all's attention tonight, as you know, we have put in the budget for a new truck to replace our 2009 model. We have been building the bids to send out for a remount, and I contact all these manufacturers just to where we can be ahead of what they're building, what they're doing, what their timeframes are. And we have one contractor that has got a new ambulance that's going to be coming available that they were going to use for a demo unit to take out to shows and et cetera. They were building two or three. They've been trying to get our business for a while, and they've dropped their price drastically on this new unit. To the difference of what our remount would cost to what this new truck would cost is roughly around $25,000 difference. We're going to go down on the 30th of this month, we're asking permission from the court to, for now, state travel to go to Georgia with the sales rep. It'll be a one-day trip, we'll leave early that morning, come back late that afternoon, that night. I have asked magistrate Varner if he could accompany us on that trip because he knows vehicles very well, just to see how they do, and if his schedule allows, then he may be able to join us with that. But we wanted to be able to go look because this is the same company that will be able to do our remount if we stick with that way, and they have a service center that's in Shelbyville. So I don't have to go to Texas every time I have something wrong with a truck. But I wanted to give you all just an opportunity to think over the price difference, I did not budget that amount, had no idea that I could possibly come up with a new truck for that cost. It's under the $300,000 mark, I believe his numbers were around 277, and we had budgeted 252. And again, the only reason they're dropping their price is they're trying to gain our business. And the other reason is, I don't want to build a set of bid specs for just a remount. If the court would so choose to spend the extra to move into the new truck at that time, then I would have to build the bid specs for a new truck to go out. So it was just an opportunity for me, I approached James and also talked to Darrell about the ideal today. Again, we wasn't expecting this to pop up, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring it to you, to give you an opportunity to purchase a brand-new vehicle that has the full warranties on everything, box and all, for that difference without bringing it to you. So that's why I wanted to make you all aware of it tonight.
Thank you, Director Bailey. Squire Gill, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, if we go that direction, would we retain that 2009, or is that a part of a trade-in?
That's part of a trade-in.
Okay.
We trade-in, they would give us the trade-in value of it, which is what they were going to do with the remount as well. The 2009 truck, as you know, is the one that we bought used, and it has the engine in it that had been replaced, the transmission, the turbo unit and stuff on it, both prior to us purchasing it. And the unit is of age that they can't remanufacture the box parts and stuff, so they can't do it. Remounting, they can rebuild that box for us, but the chassis itself is outdated that, so they really can't resell the truck. They're just giving us in kind the price of what it would be for that, and then they would just sell it off as parts.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the director's request for out-of-state travel? Motion of Squire Downey. Second by Squire Brown. Open the floor for any questions or additional discussion? Seeing none, yeah, Squire Downey.
Thank you, sorry. Do you need the ability to, during this visit, to purchase, like?
No, sir.
No, okay.
No, sir, I was, the comment was with them to set up the visit was just to see their manufacturing program, how they do remounts. As you know, we only did one remount ever in Woodford County, that was last year, and I wanted to be able to have another company's view to see how they're doing it compared to the one we did in Texas. So they agreed to the visit, and when I set that up is when he came up the fact that, hey, we'll give you this deal on this truck. I made it clear to him that we'd be making no decisions other than just looking at how things are built, what they're doing, and I would have to come back and then the court, this gives you all time, I don't want to throw it on you at one, just, you know, last second, I want you all to have time to look at it, because I still have to bid to build specs for that truck, and it can't be built to that truck. It would be a universal set of bid specs that are built, sent out to all the manufacturers, and anybody wants to compete. The other caveat to this truck is it's being on, going on assembly line now, being built. The remanufactured truck, when we go to do it, we're at 18 months out before they'll be able to get to that truck and get, get it done, at least. So that's part of the hiccup with that one. But we're perfectly fine with that because that's what we had planned for, we knew it would take a little while. The gentleman in Texas can turn it around a little bit quicker than the other companies. But I have learned by calling all the manufacturers in the last two weeks, that they are trying to get out of the remount business. It's, it's starting to kill their business is selling new trucks. So they have, after the bids that I've already currently been getting quotes on, they're going to start raising that price drastically up, because they're not selling as many new trucks, and that's hurting their business. So they're looking to change that up.
And I had my mic off, so I'd just say for the record, it was a motion by Squire Downey, second by Squire Brown to approve the out-of-state travel for EMS. Are there any additional questions or discussions, Squire Varner?
Yes, thank you, Director Bailey, for the invitation, but my schedule's not going to permit me to go with you, but thank you for your hard work on that and look forward to your report.
Absolutely. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the motion carries unanimously. Anything additional, Director Bailey?
No, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your thorough work, sir. I'd like to call the road department back up. Operations and Road Supervisor, Beau and Tracy, y'all have a couple items for us.
So we received this week both the memorandum of agreement for our flex money that the state presented to us several months ago, and then also, the legislature has, has a new way of funding roads if we request, they, it's called FD 14. So we have been, we have received that money as well. So I think our flex money ended up being 150, I didn't write the number down, but it was like $13,000 more than we budgeted for originally, which is good. And then the other one was 305,000 that we're going to have to do so, to do the roads that are on those contracts that you all received. So we just need you all to say yes to the money.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and Department of Highways and Woodford County Fiscal Court for paving funds for Payne's Mill Road and Dry Ridge Road in the amount of $305,000 and to authorize Judge Executive to sign any and all documents related thereto, including Resolution 2024-13 adopting same.
Motion.
Motion of Squire Taylor, second by Squire Gill.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the Road Supervisor? Operation Supervisor? Seeing none, having the MOA and the resolution to be approved, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the motions carry unanimously. We also need a motion to advertise and begin the bidding process for the paving on Payne's Mill Road and Dry Ridge Road as recommended by the county road supervisor.
Motion.
Motion of Squire Gentry, second by Squire Varner. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the motion carries unanimously. We also need to approve the agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, the Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid, and the Fiscal Court for the CBO 6 Flex Funds in the amount of $159,679. To authorize Judge Executive to sign those documents related thereto, including the resolution, which is adopted by this motion, 2024-14.
Motion.
Motion of Squire Gill, second by Squire Taylor. Are there any questions thereon of the Flex Fund approval? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the motions carry unanimously. Anything additional from the road department?
Well, the paving that we've done so far is Davis Town, Payne's Depot, Part of Wiesenberg has really turned out good, I'm pleased with the work. They started on Heritage, but then they had to move out. It's looking good, really, if we can get them back in, and we're going to move through this pretty quick. Have these roads up and done.
We'd like to get the rest of the paving done during fall break.
Yep.
If it'll work out.
Try to work it out, make them.
But they've got to get the bid for this other, other portion, but if it does, and they end up getting the bid, then hopefully we can get it all done before the end of this calendar year.
Thank you all, you are excused, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Director Chandler, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Judge. I have a two-part request, my Judge. At the April 9th meeting, sorry about that, two-part request, at the April 9th meeting, the court authorized me to apply to the Division of Emergency Management for some supplemental emergency management performance grant funds. We received word last week that they approved several projects, among them, the court may recall that I discussed an opportunity to buy a large mobile generator that could benefit our water districts and other community partners in exigent circumstances. The other projects, we had money in budgeted line items to provide the 50% match. This one, though, is a large purchase, and there's not a budget line item to provide the 50% match. So the request tonight before you would be whether or not to accept the supplemental grant funds, and if you do, to authorize us to begin the RFP process for said generator.
Is there a motion to accept, God bless you, is there a motion to accept the awarded grant monies for the emergency management performance grant as recommended by the director? Motion of Squire Varner.
Second.
Second by Squire Carl. Are there any questions for the director? Anything additional? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the awarded grant monies, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the motion carries. We also need to advertise and begin the bid process for the emergency performance grant generator project. Is there a motion for same?
Motion.
Motion of Squire Gentry, second by Squire Downey. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the motion carries unanimously.
That's all, Judge.
I'd like to say, recognize you for organizing the emergency preparedness and response meeting at KC TCS. The reviews from both those that were on our team, our magistrates and other elected officials that went, were that everybody needs to go to that meeting, and then the reviews from the outside of folks who came into our community and experienced that were also equally as positive. They really complimented you on your organization and the level of training that you all provided. So I'm very, very proud that you did that in our community, hosted other community and our officials in our county, and continue to work on preparedness at a level that the citizens of Woodford County appreciate.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate Squires Downey and Varner for their participation for the entire class and several other elected officials as well that aren't in the room tonight.
Squire Varner, you have something, sir?
I just want to say, thank you Drew for that, that was a great class, and I found out I knew little about it.
We'll get some more on the calendar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You again. Next up is solid waste and recycling, Sherri McDaniel, thank you for your patience.
I'm here to request the judge's signature on our waste tire agreement. This is our every-three-year event that the state sponsors with us out at the State Highway Garage 21, we collected over 10,000 tires. So just need to get the judge's signature on our agreement this year.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the Fiscal Court in regards to the state tire agreement?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Downey. Are there any questions on that? Anybody have anything for Sherri? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And we need to, that motion carries, we need to advertise and begin that bid process as well, or no, for the tire waste event?
No.
Jordan?
No. This is just where the state brings a waste tire recycler in, we man it, that's our, our part is to advertise and to man it, so that's all that is. And the agreement stipulates our part.
You have all you need for the, from the court on that?
Your signature.
And I'll sign it right now.
You guys have got the two good, wonderful events that we're having this fall, September 28th, our Household Hazardous Waste, and October 10th, 11th, and 12th for the waste tire event, so we're ready to roll for this fall.
Awesome, thank you, Sherri. I have that signed for Sherri. Is there any reports or other agencies wishing to seek to address the court at this time? Any reports? The new director of GIS and addressing, Mr. Kenneth Johns, you're welcome too.
I'm not sure that... Thanks, Judge and Court, my first audience with you all. I'm not sure if Jordan was able to provide you all with a license agreement that I have used for years when I hand out data. It's super simple, it simply is saying that people ask us for information, GIS data, I provide it back to them for the project that they're working on, and they're agreeing to only use it for said project and not use it for anything else, to make money off any other gains or whatever, it's very standard. We have had it signed by them and by the director of the planning commission or myself. I was asking the court to approve that agreement so that I could continue to use it under the court moving forward.
Can we have a motion to approve the license agreement for commercial use of data for GIS between the county, Eagleview, as presented and authorized for my signature? Motion by Squire Downey, second by Squire Carl. Are there any questions for, yes, Squire Gill, you recognize.
Is, is the license agreement the one that we got today? Because there was one in our packet, and it, this, there's an extra page in this one.
What's the back page?
Is that the one?
It's the first two pages. It should have, there's, it should be a page that's printed and signed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the license agreement? Squire Brown. Second, Ms. Squire Varner. Make sure that clarifies the motion on the table. Anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the license agreement as moved, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Johns. Any other agency or department wishing to seek to give an update to the court? Yes, Steve, you're, you're welcome. Come on up. Director Hunter, sir?
Just a quick report, but Judge, I thought earlier you mentioned you clarified.
Yeah, I did. Didn't want to miss that. So, but real quick, I will give a quick report
just so the court can hear some cases. We've got nine hearings coming our way here, first week of August. Things are rolling. So, we'll just go through those real quick, just to give you, if you guys want more facts, you can come see me. But, the Board of Adjustments meets on August the 5th, that's Monday, in this room. We've got a conditional use permit on Cummings Ferry Road, a conditional use permit on Watts Ferry Road, and a variance application on Preston Court that's gonna turn out to be the case that's gonna generate some debate. We've already got a petition on that of a couple dozen neighbors. They're on Preston Court, and that's just a variance request. Planning Commission meets that same week. This is odd that the Board of Adjustments and Planning Commission fall in the same week, but they do this first week of August. We've got a subdivision plat on Germany Road. We've got a site development plan on Park Street. We have a rezoning on Kids Mill Road that will come to the Fiscal Court. So, that's out in the county. It also has a conditional use permit attached with that on Kids Mill Road. We also have another rezoning on Stevens Street and Midway, and it has an additional conditional use permit. We're anticipating two other zone changes that did not come in that are county-side zone changes. They'll be in next month. So, we ended up with nine cases. We were thinking we were gonna have 11.
Did you say Germany Road for a subdivision?
It's a subdivision plat. So, we use the term subdivision plat. It's simply two farms being swapped around and being reconsolidated. So, it is technically a subdivision plat. Yeah. So, yes, sir.
What's the other two that probably be in next month?
They, they weren't filed, but Paul's Mill Road, there's a zone change request that didn't come in. And then, we had the tabled request, or withdrawn request that we had on Scott's Ferry East. It was withdrawn. I believe the attorneys are meeting on that, and we anticipate it's gonna probably come back in next month or the following month.
Okay.
That's all I had, Judge, and then I was just, unless you all have any other questions?
Squire Varner, you recognize.
Clarify the time for the commission.
Planning Commission meets at 6:30 August the 8th. Board of Adjustments meets at 6:30 August the 5th. Both in this room. Both are live streamed on our Facebook page.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Squire Varner. Any other questions for Director Hunter? I'd just like to noted that at the beginning of our term, there were some questions, not from this court, but it was from Midway about some of the things going on in planning and zoning. And so, Director Hunter and I had a conversation at that time about coming to the court and reporting regularly about what's going on in the month, and that's what has been going on.
Sure.
But, if there's any additional questions that you all have from Director Hunter, you may come and meet with him anytime. He's always willing to do that. Director Hunter, you're referring earlier to the direction that we came out of the executive session? And that was, for us, the Fiscal Court would ask that you investigate and look into the business operations of the rail explorers as it relates to planning and zoning and its origination, and that essentially look into that process for a report for the court. And I think in that discussion, the individual magistrates have questions that may elaborate on what they would like you to look into. I've been requested that they meet with you to discuss that. Obviously, the public is also welcome to do that as well. But, that was our, what we came out of the executive session with our request to you.
So, still a little unclear. So, we're talking about the 8-acre track, on how it came to fruition as far as?
Mr. County Attorney, can you clarify?
Separate and apart from the MAP Amendment, the business itself, the MAP Amendment came after the business started.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Is that what you're requiring about when the business first started to operate on the property in our community?
In '23, I guess, yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, you just want me to put together a timeline of all the steps up through the MAP Amendment?
Mr. County Attorney, would that be what we would foresee?
Yeah, I could do that.
My understanding, we, yeah.
All right, thank you. And again, members of the court, questions for Mr. Hunter, please address those to him.
Yep. Thank you.
And you're more than welcome to be excused, Director Hunter. All right. Well, we, we've been at this for a bit of a time. Scott's already had his recess, but we are gonna take a brief recess for five minutes, maybe longer, and we will reconvene. We are in recess. Let the record reflect that we are back in session after a brief recess. Moving on to the general orders and the unfinished business. I have no board appointments for you, but we do have the claims, the bills to be paid by this, the county. Are there any comments or questions regarding any of the bills to be paid? Seeing none, are there any objections to same? Also seeing none, I'll approve the claims without objection. We need to ratify the July 17th, 2024 email vote approving the claim of Elon Financial Services in the amount of $3,480.13. Motion, Ms. Squire Carl, second, Ms. Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We need to approve the claim in the Visa card in the amount of $1,209.40 and the Amtech Less Lethal Systems, Inc. in the amount of $1,590 for the Sheriff's Office using asset forfeiture funds. Is there a motion to approve those claims?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Gill, second, Ms. Squire Carl. Seeing no questions, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The transfers, I need approval of same?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Gentry.
Second.
Second, Ms. Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. We had a July 12th, 2024 email vote to approve the additional year-end transfers in order to get all of our year-end financial informations correct. So, is there a motion to ratify that July 12th vote? Motion, Ms. Squire Carl, second, Ms. Squire Downey. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. We have the personnel order. Is there a motion to approve same as presented?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Gentry, second, Ms. Squire Carl. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. The MOA on the food pantry. You all received that late this afternoon. I'm gonna go through the provisions so that you can understand it because I want to discuss what I think needs to happen. The Fiscal Court, City of Vercels, City of Midway, agree to jointly fund the executive director position of the Woodford County Food Pantry in the amount of $75,000 per year for total compensation. That would be salary and/or benefits. In year one, the Fiscal Court and the City of Vercels will share the total cost of funding the executive director position equally, 50% paid by Woodford County, 50% paid by the City of Vercels. In year two, the Fiscal Court, the City of Vercels, and Midway shall share the total cost of funding for the executive director position as follows. City of Vercels, 45%. Woodford County Fiscal Court, 50%. City of Midway, 5%. The Woodford County Fiscal Court, through the Judge Executive, shall be responsible for the administration of the position as either a contractor or a county employee in cooperation, in coordination with the Food Pantry Board and volunteers. The Food Pantry Board and each legislative body must fund the executive director position, shall have, shall agree on the job duties and responsibilities of that position. A draft has been circulated to you all. This has been sent to the Food Pantry Board and discussed with the current Director of the Food Pantry, Ms. Sharon Harden. There is potential additions, corrections, or clarifications in that job description. The Judge Executive, mayors, and representatives of the Food Pantry shall approve advertising, interviewing, vetting, and recommending the hire of the Food Pantry Executive Director. The position may be an independent contractor position with the county or be a county employee as agreed upon by the parties to the agreement. Food Pantry Board and each legislative body funding the executive director position shall approve the hiring of the executive director. The note is that Midway does not fund it in the first year, and therefore, they would not have the responsibility to approve the executive director hire in the first year because they are not funding. Any non-funding party would need to approve the hiring, would not need to approve the hiring. In the interest of expediency, the respective parties here too can agree to grant approval authority to the Judge Executive, mayors, or Food Pantry Board Chair, or agree to call a special meeting and vote to act on hiring as soon as the recommendation is presented. The Woodford County Fiscal Court shall invoice the parties here too on a schedule agreed upon by the parties. The cities agree to pay the set invoice within 30 days without delay. The mayors and the judge can discuss any issues or questions related to the invoice should they arise. Parties may agree to increase or decrease the amount through an official, formal action in open session of each individual legislative body of the parties. Any agreed-upon reduction or increase shall only occur at the beginning of a new fiscal year. The initial term of this contract shall be for two years from the date executed and will automatically renew each year unless either party gives at least 90 days' written notice of termination of this agreement prior to July 1 of the following fiscal year. In such case, the executive director position shall return to the food pantry. The cities and the counties will work together to negotiate and incorporate this agreement into an interlocal agreement, if at all possible, to ensure the stability of the food pantry going forward. The last three provisions for modification, construction, and legal action are form language, but that is the total sum of the agreement. And my plans are to meet with the executive director of the Food Pantry, Ms. Sharon Harden, and volunteers to discuss specifically this memorandum of agreement and the executive director position. The reason that I went through and read each item of that is because you've just received this memorandum today. And we're hoping to move forward, since we have three weeks between our next court meeting, move forward with this memorandum of agreement to get approved so that we can start advertising for hire. We are hoping to get someone that will be able to work with Sharon Harden before her departure on October the 1st. So, I would open up the floor for any questions regarding the memorandum of agreement between the cities, the county, and the food pantry. And nobody has passed this to, as of today. Open up the floor for any discussion or questions thereon. Then I entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement contingent upon the final approval of the county attorney and the judge executive for both the memorandum of agreement and the food pantry job description for executive director.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Carl, second, Ms. Squire Downey. Now, I'd like to open up the floor for any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item would be upon approval of the memorandum of agreement by all... The next item would be upon approval of the memorandum of agreement by all parties heretofore, that the fiscal court shall authorize the advertising and hiring process to begin for the food pantry executive director.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Taylor, second, Ms. Squire Downey. Are there any questions about the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Pursuant to, uh, subsection E., uh, in the interest of expediency, the respective parties can agree to grant approval of authority to the judge executive or call a special meeting to vote on the act of the hiring recommend- recommendation as, as presented. My request would be that, um, I send out all the information about the hiring process to the fiscal court. You get to review all the applicants and applications. Um, and then once the interviews and the city and the county and the food pantry have come together for a recommendation, I would like the authority or approval of the fiscal court to approve that recommendation so that we do not have to call a special meeting and that we can move forward with that process. Again, all of the requisite pre approvals would be given, I mean, I'm sorry, information about the recommendation would go before the court. We would at least have one meeting between now and then. Uh, but in the event that, uh, it falls in between court meetings, I would, uh, request the ability, the authority to approve, uh, the hiring of this executive director position as recommended by their committee. Is there a motion for same? Second, Ms. Squire Downey, second, Ms. Squire Taylor. I'd open up the floor for any discussion thereon. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. That takes care of the MOA for the food pantry. Next item is a big, important item. It's the Young and New Farmer Grant Program. You've had the resolution, we've had a, a few minor changes to that, but it is essentially the same. And I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-12, establishing a Young and New Farmer Grant Program to be administered by the Woodford County Fiscal Court in fiscal year 2425. Motion, Ms. Squire Brown, second, Ms. Squire Varner. Are there any questions or discussion? I would just like to thank our, uh, Ag Extension Agent Bo Neal. I'd like to thank Squire Daryl Varner for his input, uh, and other folks who have helped us put together this grant program. Are there any questions? I would just note that section three, uh, should read, if it does not already on your form, the budgeted amount is $50,000 will be awarded in total. That's section three. Um, and the resolution will be contingent upon the, uh, final date established for the deadline for applications. Other than that, the entire resolution is as it should be. So is there a motion to adopt, or, excuse me, is there a vote to adopt same? Are we ready? All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Now, we need to approve the criteria and guidelines for the Young and New Farmer Grant Program as presented.
Motion.
Ms. Squire Varner, second, Ms. Squire Blackford. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Now, moving on to the GIs agreements. We need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for GIs and 911 services between the fiscal court, city of Urssells, city of Midway, and the Urssells, Woodford County 911, contingent of, on approval of all said agencies and the final review of the county attorney and judge executive.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Gentry, second, Ms. Squire Downey. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Need a motion to approve the contract between the Woodford County Fiscal Court and the Woodford County PVA for GIs funding services related to the property valuation administration. Authorize the judge to sign any and all documents related thereon. Uh, and pending the approval of the county attorney, final approval of the county attorney and judge executive.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Gill, second, Ms. Squire Blackford. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the county, the city of Urssells, city of Midway, and the Urssells, Midway, Woodford County Planning Commission for funding of GIs services related to the planning commission, contingent upon the approval of all said agencies and the final review of the county attorney and judge executive.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Varner, second, Ms. Squire Brown. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item is the contract to house inmates. Um, I apologize if that read the way on the agenda, um, but there is a mo- I need a motion to approve the contract between the Woodford County Fiscal Court and the Mercer County Fiscal Court to house inmates at the Woodford County Detention Center. Motion, Ms. Squire Blackford, second, Ms. Squire Carl. I would just add that, um, our jailer, Michelle Rankin, has worked diligently with the Mercer County jailer, Mercer County judge in their fiscal court, along with the county attorney and myself, to create a contract, uh, which would allow us to house the inmates of the Mercer County Fiscal Court. Uh, this is a good, I appreciate the leadership of the jailer and the, the good working relationship between Judge Sarah Steele of Mercer County, their fiscal court, and us. And I think it's something that, um, will ultimately help our revenues. And I think that they want, them wanting to house at our jail shows that, um, that our jailer, Michelle Rankin, runs a good operation. And, um, that, that's one of the main reasons that they want to be in this contract with us. So I'd open up the floor for any discussion thereon. Any additional discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We need to have the first reading of the budget amendment number one, ordinance 2024-5, relating to unbudgeted receipts for the prior fiscal year 2324 to carry over and to authorize the judge to sign same.
Motion.
Ms. Squire Gill.
Second.
Second, Ms. Squire Taylor. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Yes, Judge, this will be a summary reading of that budget amendment and ordinance relating to the fiscal year 2425 annual budget. Uh, the budget for this, uh, fiscal year is amended to reflect total amended revenues for general road, state grants, disaster emergency services fund, sheriff asset forfeiture, county clerk, permanent storage fees, opioid settlement monies, and American Rescue Plan Act money. Total amended revenues decreased $1,280,021.46. Um, and so this is reflected both in the receipts and expenditures. This being a first reading, it does need to, uh, well, we can actually have it at the next meeting since we have a three-week gap. Uh, advertise for a second reading, uh, on your August, uh, at your August 13th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
Moving on to new business, we need to accept the county clerk's quarterly report for the quarter ending June 30, 2024. Motion, Ms. Squire Gill.
Second.
Second, Ms. Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We need to approve the fiscal court's surplus items as presented and authorize the sale of specific items that are deemed of value to sell on gov deal, gov deals if necessary, and authorize the disposal of any other items such as electronic waste at the Woodford County Solid Waste and Recycling Center.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squire Carl, second, Ms. Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. We did do the license agreement for GIs. Uh, Madam Treasurer, is there anything that you can see that we need to attend to? And we will go through magistrates. Magistrates, uh, we'll start out with Squire Brown.
Nothing, Judge.
Thank you, sir. Squire Taylor.
Nothing, Judge.
Squire Gentry.
Uh, yeah, fire gate signs are now up on Rose Lane. I wanted to thank the, uh, road department, Kenneth Johns, uh, Chief Montgomery, and all the volunteers that helped put those up. Looks great and it'll, uh, yeah, hopefully if there's any emergencies out there now, they can be found quick.
Excellent team effort, thank you, Squire Gentry. Squire Varner, sir.
Nothing, Judge, thanks.
Thank you, Squire Carl.
Nothing, Judge.
Squire Downey.
Uh, only thing, Judge, tomorrow, the Kentucky State Police will be at the library to give a presentation on internet safety and social media dangers, uh, how to be aware and combat those. So tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at the library.
Awesome, thank you, Squire Downey, Squire Blackford, sir. Squire Gill, ma'am.
Yeah, just a couple of things. July 27th is Saturday, um, two events out at Hunter Town at 10 to 11 a.m. Uh, Ray Mendenhall will do storytelling, bring a chair or blanket and enjoy some stories. And then we've got a big event Saturday evening from 7:00 to 8:00. It's History at Sunset, um, that will, it, it is a program with Ranger Steve Van as we explore the stories of formerly enslaved Woodford County men who journeyed to Camp Nelson 160 years ago to gain their freedom by joining the Union Army. And it's, it's, uh, promises to be very interesting, so I hope everybody, or a lot of people, can make it. It begins at 7:00 p.m. out at the park.
Thank you, Squire Gill. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
No, but thank you, Judge.
Just have a few brief things. Uh, one thing I didn't go over, um, you'll see this, uh, estimate quote for a, uh, side-by-side. The road department and the maintenance department have identified that as an important need that, that they believe would also serve other county departments. We are looking at trying to build that, um, separately between both departments. Basically, uh, the road department, maintenance department would split half of that and would go for county use. Uh, I don't need to do any approval thereon, but, um, I wanted you all to know about that. And if you have any questions, talk to Bo Wilson or Rick Wade and/or Rick Hartley. And if you are familiar, Squire Varner, as I know you are, uh, you, you may want to input your wisdom on that if you see, uh, something else we should look at. And, um, the other thing is the sixth annual Friendship Fest, which serves students in need in our community, will happen, uh, Saturday, July 27th at the county park, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. I'd like to give a big shout out to Brittany Campbell for organizing that. Her and her strengthening transformations team does that and, uh, it is a true service to those, especially our kids in need. Um, that's all I have. I'd like to, uh, again, uh, adjourn this meeting in honor of Mr. Larry Richards, a great Woodford County, and whom we lost, and I send our prayers and condolences to Brenda and the family. There's nothing else to come for this honorable court. We are adjourned. God bless you. God bless Woodford County and have a great evening.